Okay, we're good. All right, so, on to number two. So, this is KP Law. Mark, I hope I don't watch your name. Is it Rich?
Rich.
Rich, okay. Nothing like that, Rich. All right, so, this is Mark Rich. Mark, my name's Stephanie McGowan. I'm the chairperson. Just so you know a little bit about us. In my fifth year, first year chair, fifth year on the board. I've lived in town for 27 years. I'm not a townie, but I married a townie. And very excited to, you know, for us, I think, Doc, other than you, Pat Costello was here when... Okay. So, this board, first time hiring town council, so, very excited to meet with you and hear what you have to say. Yep, Debbie Jaddino, I just was elected to this board.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Former employee of the town for 22 years, and it was time to give back, so here I am. Excited to be here and excited for this process. Thank you for joining.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Mark, we've met before, obviously. I'm first year as well, but I've lived in town for 32 years, as we've stated, not a townie, sorry. Raised my kids here, but also my grandkids are here. And I spent 32 years in the private sector before coming to town, and actually spent the last 12 and a half years as the business manager for the school district, and the last 23 years as the chairman of the building committee, so.
Mark also, easy to remember.
Yep.
Been in town 32 years. I'm on my ninth year of my third term being on the board. Not a townie, but like Steph, married a townie, have a small business in town, I'm a chiropractor, so I live in town, I work in town, volunteer in town, and love the community like the other three board, four board members. There was a fifth board member, he's listening in, but he's not zooming in. He couldn't make it personally here.
Okay, okay.
Thanks for reminding, I keep forgetting Dennis. Even though he's not zooming, he's out there.
Dennis is watching.
But I don't know if he's watching.
Yes, okay. All right, awesome. Okay, so, I see, Mark, we're, we have a little set of questions that we're asking everybody.
Sure, sure.
So, first topic is legal expertise. Can you please give us some background on your firm and why you believe you would be a good legal partner for the town of Foxborough?
Sure, thank you very much. And thank you for having me here today. This is an exciting opportunity to be here, you know, enjoyed the meeting with Bill, and was looking forward to meeting with you, and I really appreciate you having us back for this discussion. So, as you know, KP Law is the second iteration of Coleman and Page. Coleman and Page dates back, you know, well over 40 years as a prominent municipal law firm, really kind of took on the concept of putting together a firm that served municipalities exclusively, and developing the expertise in municipal law. So, the firm, the firm has obviously grown. We represent about, about a third of the municipalities in the Commonwealth. We have expertise in all areas. Our philosophy is that towns shouldn't have to, when they hire a firm, shouldn't have to look to special counsel, should be able to get all the answers through their own counsel. We run the gamut from litigation, labor and employment, and I know that that's not at the forefront right now, but it is an important part of our practice, environmental law, land use, real estate. We don't have a private practice. We do a small amount of real estate practice. It's usually almost like favors for individuals who need some real estate background and backing, but we are, I would say, 99.8% municipal law. I personally don't practice any, any private law. I've been, I've been in municipal law business for my entire practice, which is now about 36 years, so, a little while. I started as, in the mayor's office in the city of Everett and in the law department, and we just, we had two attorneys in that, that office. I got to know the then Coleman and Page, because I hired them when I was, when I was in the law department in Everett. We realized at that time that two people couldn't run everything. The business of municipal law has grown so much, and we realized that there are certain, certain activities and cases and matters that could overwhelm an in-house law firm. And in that case, we hired Coleman and Page to do a site assignment for a solid waste facility, which was a very extensive process. And interestingly, now, I do a lot of that for KP. So, when, when my time was done in Everett, the mayor that I, that I worked with, I was there for about 10 years, and when, when he was defeated in the election, it was, it was time to move on, obviously. Cities are very different. When, when a new mayor comes in, there's usually the opportunity where the mayor, mayor brings in their own staff, and I chose at that time to, to make a move. I contacted Coleman and Page, and they brought me on, and it was a very natural fit. I think the Coleman and Page philosophy, which is translated to KP. KP bought, when Leonard Coleman and Donald Page decided they wanted to retire, and although Leonard has, has re-engaged in the practice, Donald Page unfortunately passed away. We put together a transition team, I was part of that team, to develop a transition plan, because we had two options. One was split up the band, everybody goes their separate ways, and, and who knows where you go, or, or try to keep the team together. And we thought we really had a good thing. We really enjoy everything that we do. Most of us come from municipal practice. Lauren Goldberg, who met with you, Bill, she came from, from the state, from the state's election division, she was chief elections council. Some of us come from, like myself, from in-house, in municipalities, state, federal, and we all, we all come together because we like, we like, as we call it, wearing the white hat, representing the public sector. That's, that's what we do. So, we, when we transitioned, a group of us bought the firm, and so now, we are essentially, we're almost like an owner-operated shop, where most of us, the large percentage of us, are shareholders of the firm. We have a five-member management committee, I'm a member of that management committee, who oversee the day-to-day operations. And the way we operate, just so you know, I know, Bill, you heard a lot about this, we have a primary contact system. And I know, there was a lot of discussion, I did watch your, your two meetings on, on this issue, because I know this is, this is a big deal. Hiring, hiring town council is a very big deal, and I've, I've known Pat Costello for a long time, and have enormous respect for him, and I know, I know what a good job he did for you. The way we operate, we have a primary contact system so that you have a single point of contact at the firm who manages everything for you. So, you don't have that situation where you have to think about, who do we call on this particular day, and who's going to be answering the phone, who's going to be dealing with our business? You would have that one person who addresses your business, and in this case, that would be me. And we put together small teams that you have backup. Joe Fair, who lives just in Walpole, he would be my backup. He and I do that for a number of municipalities, and works really well. And then Jonathan Murray is listed also as, as land use, so, he would, he would handle your, your land use matters. But the idea is to have a single point of contact, a single town council, because, you know, having done this now for, you know, 35 odd years, I, I know how the town council process works or should work, and the town council process should be that your town council is part of your team, part of your town, someone that you can count on, you could relate to, that you know. And, you know, Foxborough has a lot of exciting opportunities. You've got, you know, three major projects, 20, about $20 million in, in projects that you're undertaking right now. You've got ongoing issues, you've got, obviously, you know, the unique situation with Gillette and Patriot Place, and it, some very exciting opportunities. And so, I, I know there was some discussion about the firm just liking to get clients and just have, have more, more towns and cities, and that's, that's actually not how we operate. We look at each municipality as, as a unique entity. If you look at the, the references that I have in, in the package, and I know it's, it's a pretty thick, I don't expect that you would have read through everything in there. I looked at it, I thought, wow, that's, that's a lot. I wish we kind of could shave that down, but it's, it's, it's important to answer all the questions you have. And if you look at that, the clients that are listed as my references, they're clients I've worked with for 20, you know, 15, 20, 25 years. And each one of them will tell you, one of, one of the things that I, I pride myself on is my relationship with, my individual relationship with the clients. You have the firm, but I, I think of it, it's funny, you talk about it as being a big firm, I think of it as a small firm in the sense that you have just the, the limited team, the small team, that is, that's your team. You have all the other folks behind us, so they could back us up with, with their specific areas of expertise. We have individuals who have, you know, expertise in data breaches, and specific wetlands issues, and harbor master issues, and some really unique and, and particular areas. But you shouldn't have to, you shouldn't ever have to think, who do I reach out to? And if you speak to the, the clients that I work with, you'll know that, again, I pride myself in my responsiveness. You know, Bill asked me, how do you do it? And I said, I just, I do it. And one of the big things is, I, I generally don't handle litigation myself, I don't handle daytime hearings, I'm available at night for, for your meetings, but I try to keep my, my schedule more open. I've done plenty of litigation, I've done plenty of hearings, I've done those, those procedures and matters, but if you, if you're sent, if your primary counsel is tied up with litigation matters like that, they're not going to be available. When Page calls up and says, hey, I need to talk about, something just came up, we just had, and I think I use this example, we, Thanksgiving, the, the water line under the high school field just burst, and we've got to figure out, how do we do an emergency repair, and we need you down here, and I have to say goodbye to my family and go down for that. That's what we do, and you can't do that if you're, if you're handling the litigation yourself. But at the same time, you, being town council, you have to know exactly what's happening in each of these cases. You have, your, your, your team behind you has to keep you constantly informed, so that, again, you're the center point of contact, the buck stops with you, you're responsible. So, that's, that's kind of the process we work. And, again, we pride ourselves, I pride myself, on 24/7 access. I'm, I'm always available. So, I think that we have a lot, we have a lot to offer. I understand any of the comments about the big firm, it's just because it's been, it's been a successful process. And that's why, that's why I'm here, and that's why I stayed with the firm as long as I have, that's why I was eager to become an owner of the firm, so that I have ownership of the, of the product, the product that we bring to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please describe your approach to managing municipal law issues for your clients, your municipal clients.
I was probably a segue from the, the last discussion. My approach, it's, it's very important to, to fully understand, in any case, in any matter, the facts of the circumstances, what, how, how a matter arose, if it's, it could be anything from a dangerous or nuisance dog hearing, to a zoning, a fence dispute, a zoning matter, a land, a landfill, site assignment issue, a public construction project, you know, public works or public buildings. It's important to have the full background from, from the beginning of the process, that we're not jumping in late in the process. One of the things we strive to do is, is to give you as much information early on, so that you avoid pitfalls. So, our, our approach is to get you informed, to get you information and materials as early as possible, so that you can make good decisions, that your staff, and obviously the day-to-day processes through the departments, so that your departments have at their disposal the materials they need. One of the big things, and we talked about this with Bill and Page, is we have a catalog of contract forms and documents that, we don't, we don't strive for a cookie cutter. It's not a situation where we say, you know, do it just this way, but we do have a lot of documents and materials that we've developed over time, so that, one of the, one of the things I always say to my clients, I'm sure Pat Costello said the same thing to you, and I know, Bill, we talked about this a little bit, is making sure that, especially on the contracting side, and I do a lot of public construction and contracting, 30B, Chapter 149, Chapter 30, Section 39M, public works, projects, the, to make sure that you're armed with your own documents, so that when you're hiring vendors, you're hiring contractors, you're entering into big construction projects, that you're using forms that, and documents that are protective of the town. You want, you don't want to be accepting vendor contracts, you don't want to be accepting outside contracts for even, I do a lot of negotiations for owners, project managers, and designers. And on the real estate side, we do the same thing, with, with having documents that are protective of the town, that avoid situations where you're being asked to sign a contract that has illegal or inappropriate or terms that are not beneficial to the town, not protective to the town. Our goal is to be protective right from the start, so that you're forearmed, you have, you have all those materials at your fingertips, because it's a lot easier for me to defend your position if you're starting, even forgetting the construction and contracting stuff, if you're doing hearings, if you're doing, you know, zoning and, and planning, special permit hearings, variance hearings, to make sure that you've gone through the process correctly, you follow the open meeting law, you follow the requirement, the statutory requirements for any, any public hearing, that you've, you've properly addressed the facts and issues, made a proper determination, and that your decision process is a defensible position, defensible decision, properly written, properly reasoned, properly documented, so that if it is challenged, we can, we can defend it. So, we help you from that beginning, lead you through that process, and we're there with you during that process, so that at the end of the day, again, unfortunately, as you know, you, you could challenge, a butter's challenge, or an applicant doesn't, either doesn't like the denial, or doesn't like the, the conditions on the permit, and we want to be there from the beginning to, to stand beside you, and to make sure that the ultimate decision is one that can be defended in court.
You've kind of touched on this a little bit, but just, maybe something to add, and that's, in addition to the municipal law, obviously, that your firm, what other, what other areas does your firm excel in, you know, labor, MCAD issues, stuff like that?
We deal with, you know, MCAD, we deal with a lot of, well, lot, labor and employment, we have, we have a full department that involves that, and Joe Fair, who's the backup, he's also an all-around municipal attorney, but he specifically is involved in labor and employment. We do a lot of, a lot of hearings before MCAD and other agencies. We do a lot of training on, on, on issues that, that have to do with discriminatory practices, and especially right now with diversity issues, and we, we believe heavily in the training process, so that, again, your, your departments learn, and your commissions and boards learn how to address these issues, you know, open meeting law, public records, law of conflict of interest, but we, I think, we run the gamut. I, I, again, I think there's a lot in that proposal that you see, and pretty much any question that you've had on the municipal level, we, we've dealt with. You know, Pat, Pat had that experience when he was with us, and he was, he actually mentored me early on. So, it's, it's an interesting, interesting situation, but I think we, we cover all of the bases of municipal law, and then, as I said, outside municipal, I mean, we do, we do environmental law, 21E, but again, on the municipal side, we, we, we focus on the municipal side. We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't sit on the other side of the V.
Thank you. What is your experience with issues involving police and fire? More specifically, dealing with license to carry appeals, suitability, alcohol issues?
We have, we have an extensive practice with respect to police and fire. Everything, obviously, now, a lot of issues dealing with the post-commissions, that's, that's gotten very complicated with complaints that, that come in, and how they have to be resolved and addressed, specifically with the police department. We represent police chiefs throughout the Commonwealth on license to carry and appeals. It's gotten more difficult, obviously, you know, the law has changed, and, and so, that process has gotten more difficult, but we do that extensively, and we work very closely, it's not just, you know, when we talk about police and fire, it's not, not just those issues. It's now, our police and fire departments are being inundated with public records requests, I think, kind of hand-in-hand with, with the post-commission issues, but we're finding that the public records law, especially since the law was changed, and the implementation of the ability to obtain attorney's fees for failure to comply with the law, we, we find that the public records law has somewhat been weaponized, and it's really being, it's really being used in a heavy-handed manner with respect to police and fire departments. They are just inundated. We work with our, with our chiefs on records production, responses, providing responses, and working very closely with them. We really enjoy the relationships we have, we, we obviously appreciate their service and, and deal very closely with, with the rank and file as well as the chief, and particularly with, with respect to, with respect to the licensing issues. We, we, we work with some chiefs who like to do it themselves, and we give them the guidance, so that they, they can handle those cases themselves, but, but we, we like to be in court with them, we like to be at the hearings, and, and again, provide the arguments so that we can, we can defend the positions. We like to help the chiefs with their initial determinations, but obviously, they have a great deal of discretion. And, you know, we work, we work closely, as an example recently, with, with the town of Dedham on issues having to do with the, the location of a, of a new entity that wanted to sell guns within the town, and how you address that through, through zoning issues, you know, Second Amendment rights, and the, the, kind of the diversion between the right to carry versus the right to purchase, which is, which interestingly is, is a somewhat different concept. And so, we work very carefully on that, because the town is very concerned about having its, its first kind of open firearms distributor and, and sales store that was right on, right on the main drag. So, we, we get involved in a lot of police issues, and we work, again, very closely, aside from the labor and employment issues, where we deal with the collective, the collective bargain agreements. I know, again, that's not a topic for today, but that, that's an extensive process that we, we work with. In fact, our labor and employment folks become very close with the chiefs and town managers, they spend entire days in hearings and developing the collective bargain agreements, but again, not, not for today's discussion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
When dealing with complex zoning issues, what is your approach?
With complex zoning issues, I guess, the, the, we deal on the, on the town meeting end of things with a, with a thorough review of any proposed zoning amendments, but then, when you get past that to the actual implementation, we, again, we, we, we need to know the, the basic facts and issues. I know that the town recently voted down the MBTA communities' proposed bylaw, and I'm sure that that's very significant in your thinking with respect to that question. We, we've had a number of municipalities that have voted it down, some that had, interestingly, at one town meeting where, where I was attending, my recommendation to, to kind of address the issue as I saw the, the proposed zoning bylaw about to tank, was to have someone make a motion to refer the, the zoning back to the planning board, so that it could come up again. And the, the real reason we did that, and I'm sure you, you think about this also, is so, so that the attorney general, who was watching, literally watching, I think I told you about this, Bill, watching as of the moment, I was getting emails from the attorney general's office as this, this matter was going to, going to vote, almost like somebody was watching over our shoulder. And we wanted to just protect the ability of the town to bring it back for further consideration, knowing that there are a lot of issues. That particular issue, that's one we could spend the whole day talking about, and I don't think that's what you're looking for today. But in terms of handling complex zoning issues, we, we work very closely with the zoning board of appeals, and the planning board, special permit granting authorities, whoever it is who's involved, we work with, we work with planners to, to develop appropriate planning, to look at the zoning bylaws, we do zoning bylaw reviews with, with our clients. And when you talk about how to address it, I mean, it's, I think it's a very broad question in terms of, of what, what the specific issue is. Obviously, we, we defend the decisions, we work with towns, if you are the, the permit granting authority, you've granted a permit, we usually see the, a passive defense approach, where you let the entity that obtained the permit, they bear the cost and the effort of, of defending their permit, and we, we observe the, the litigation, but ultimately, it's, it's the, the choice of the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, and even the select board, as to our level of involvement. When a permit is denied, you know, we, we get, we get involved, obviously, in defending the decision, hopefully a decision that we helped with, so that when you make that zoning decision, that, that the zoning, the zoning decision is defensible based on a proper hearing and a proper process, and then the decision itself is a well-crafted decision. We work on a lot of Dover amendment issues, so, working with, and, you know, you've probably seen a number of those issues, where you have exempt entities that are exempt from zoning other than reasonable dimensional requirements, and we work very carefully to make sure that we, we'll push as far as we can up to that line, because, you know, the concept of reasonable dimensional requirements, they're, they're different opinions on how far you can push that. We work on pilot agreements, I know that was something that was raised, with entities that are Dover exempt, religious entities, educational exemptions, so that we, we can try to recoup some costs from, for, for the municipality based upon their, their use, because they're still obviously, I won't say a burden, well, I guess make, you can't say a burden, on the, on the tax dollars, because they're still getting the same services as, as everyone else. But I think the primary issue in dealing with the, a complex zoning process is to be, again, involved at the beginning, so that we're working first with a, a careful knowledge of your zoning bylaws, and then pushing it through to the application of those bylaws to the particular circumstance, being there for your hearing process, drafting the decision if necessary, working with your planners to make sure the, the facts are, are proper, the determination is, is consistent with Chapter 40A and your zoning bylaw, and then imposing appropriate conditions, so that the, the, the application, the, the project can move forward in a manner that's beneficial to the municipality. But ultimately, if, if, if there's a challenge, we defend that challenge, based on a proper decision.
Okay. Next topic is understanding, the understanding of town issues and needs. What do you consider to be some of the biggest issues facing municipalities in general?
Well, I think we already touched on, on the MBTA zoning. That seems to be wildly popular as, as a topic of discussion. We're, again, we, I've been lecturing on issues of flag displays, and the, the recent change in the case law with respect to public comment at, at open meetings. We see the changes over time with respect to public records law and open meeting law, and how that affects on a day-to-day basis. I mean, every time you meet, you're dealing with the open meeting law, and, and every time you do a display, or you do, you do a public, a, a public activity, I think we're all under the microscope much more than, than we had been. I did a, a talk for the, working with the Mass Municipal Association on the issues with respect to flag flying and the, the recent shirtlif case. Going back a little bit, I was one of the, the leaders in the push to get municipalities involved in the opioid litigation, the, the national opioid litigation. It's touched on everyone, every one of us has friends, family, who have been touched with, with, with impacts from the opioid crisis, so I crisscrossed the Commonwealth, going to mayor's meetings, small town administrators' meetings, specific meetings with, with a number of groups. That's a case that we took on at no cost, it's, it's a contingent fee case, so the towns aren't actually paying for that through their, through their legal budgets, and in fact, we have, we have a, a fee, a fee fund administration, and so, the funding for that is totally separate. We didn't go into that with the mind towards obtaining money from it, we, we felt that that was a good government and a, and a very good social issue. So, we spent a lot of time getting municipalities involved, and I'm very proud of, of the outcome with that. I know the attorney general joined in a little later than we did, and really followed through. I've met with the attorney general, I've actually met with the attorney general and the director of the Bureau of, the Department of Revenue, Director of Accounts, to develop the mechanisms by which municipalities could then expend the monies that came from the opioid settlements, and, and which then translated to a, a change in Chapter 44, Section 53, to allow special revenue funds to be used for opioid litigation. We're now involved similarly in the PFAS litigation, that's the next big issue that's, that's hitting municipalities with water supplies. So, that's, we, we try to, we, we obviously watch the trends, not be, not because they're trendy, but because we, we want to see what's going to impact our clients, but some of these big, big issues, they're, they're national issues, and we want to make sure that our, our clients can benefit from the protection of a national litigation, at the same time looking at what, what are the specific needs of the municipality. So, those are some of the issues that have really been kind of hard-hitting lately. I really do think the use of, of the public records law and change in the, or push for change in the open meeting law is, is significant on a day-to-day basis for municipalities.
Okay. The next question we're going to ask was to talk about the MBTA Act, so I think we can, we can pass that one.
We could spend the whole day on that one.
I know, I know.
I don't know that you really want to.
You know something, we've heard so much about it, talked about so much about it, and I'm sure you have too, it's good to pass over the question, to be honest with you.
And, and, P. Maya, I, I tend to speak a lot... And, Pima, I tend to speak a lot, because I want to try to get as much information out there, and Bill saw a little bit of that, Bill was my victim, but you cut me off if you want to move on.
Well, good, our bullet points, we knew that you would probably mention some of the things before, so that's perfect. So I know we can skip that one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Bill's got a good question for you.
You know, while Foxborough has a good commercial base, the largest is the craft organization and Mast General Brigham's organizations. Does your firm have any interactions with them, and could there be any perceived conflict of interest?
No, none at all. We were, I, to be honest, I'm not even a football fan, I'm not a sports guy. Joe Fair, if Joe Fair was here, he could make all the sports analogies and comments, that's not me. But no, I, we don't have any relationship, and we certainly see, I think, Bill, you mentioned some of the issues that are, I know it's kind of further down the road, but yeah, that's a unique situation for Foxborough, of course, but no, we have no interaction with them.
Okay, and just a little follow-up to that. Now, if you were to become our legal counsel, where there are conflict of interest, you know, looking at the communities, the one that hits me is Walpole, and a lot of times when something is going on up there, we have meetings that we have a lot of Walpole residents here, and we try our best to listen to them too, because we like to be a good neighbor. So do you, so maybe that's a hard question to ask, because if you're not having, you know, contact with the Patriots or the craft organization, you know, so what would you do if something did come up there and it was affecting Foxborough and affecting Walpole at the same time?
We have, obviously, a number of situations where we represent abutting municipalities, and we find a lot of times we're in a very good position to bring municipalities together, we do a lot of intermunicipal agreements. I do a lot of work with Jim Johnson, I know him very well. But it's similar in a number of our municipalities, when I'm working in Watertown, and we're dealing with folks in Belmont that we represent, or when we're dealing with a regional school district and a bunch of our, you know, the Lakeville Regional School, the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District, we represent Freetown and Lakeville. We can advise on the bear law, and we can advise you on things that are specific to you. If there's a direct conflict, obviously, that's a situation we have to recommend special counsel. But it's a very, very rare situation, because usually in these circumstances, it's not an actual conflict, it's just making sure that we recognize the interests of both, we represent your interests specifically. We don't pick and choose, it's not a situation where you'd say, you've been counsel for Walpole for so long, obviously, you're going to favor them. That's not an ethical breach that we'd want to delve into, that's a violation of our ethical obligations to you. So we would make sure that you were fully and properly represented, and I do think we're in a really good position to bring parties together and to bridge some of those issues, and result in something that's successful for both. But we're here as if, if we were town counsel for Foxborough, and I'd love to be your counsel, we would be fully focused on you. And when I say we have no interaction with, that was with respect to a conflict of interest question, but certainly with respect to negotiations, that would be very exciting, obviously. I think any law firm would love to be involved in that kind of situation. And I think that in that case, Foxborough's unique interests, that's what we'd be representing.
Thank you. Under client communications, how do you typically manage your relationship with clients? For example, lead attorney or team approach, and why?
I'm the lead attorney. I handle the clients. I am the one, I take all the calls, you know, my cellphone is on all the time, as I mentioned the famous Thanksgiving case, which was just a funny one where we had to handle something right then, but, you know, my wife gets tired of, Sunday nights, I'm rushing out to pick up the phone, I'm always available. I have a team, it's important to have a team, because, you know, occasionally I get sick, or occasionally I do take a vacation. But I'll tell you, I had a lovely conversation with one of my mayors while I was sitting in a cafe in Italy. I pick up the phone, and...
It's nice to have it.
It was, yeah, it was, well, that's exactly, although it was pretty funny, because as I was speaking to her, the espresso machine exploded, literally exploded, and I'm jumping back, and she said, "What's going on?" I said, "I'm sitting here in this cafe," and she said, "Why did you pick up the phone?" I said, "Because you called." And it's great, now, you know, texting, but to the point, that's what I like to do. I'm very relationship-oriented. Your town council, that's a serious relationship. Obviously, you're going through this process, you've got three excellent firms, the fourth, another excellent firm, you've got some real heavy hitters that are contending for this. I think, you know, you're in an excellent position, obviously, Foxborough, everybody wants to be involved in Foxborough. But it's important to make sure that when you make that decision, and you're making that decision, obviously, that you're comfortable with that relationship, that it's someone that you feel comfortable speaking to on a regular basis, that you know is going to get back to you, that is not going to avoid you, or not take the time to go through your issues, that you're worried about every time you call, and you're on the clock. I encourage, and I talk to my Select Boards all the time, and I would say this to you as well, I encourage Select Board members to call me up, and obviously, it's got to be through the chair, and you've got to figure out how you want to do this, but I like to know what's happening in the community, so that when you call me up, I don't want to be a stranger, I want to be not only part of your team, but part of your town. So it's important to have that level of relationship. And as an example, I think about the city of Amesbury, it's a small city, but it's a city. I've worked for every mayor that ever served, we go back to the first mayor, and when they were town. I've been in Watertown, I've been their counsel, their lead counsel now for over 20 years, and secondary counsel before that, and every one of their counselors, they'll call me up, and the council president will say, "You can't talk to everybody." So, yeah, but I need to hear their issues, I need to know what's going on, and not everything winds up on the bill, it's not one of those situations. But ultimately, the answer is, it comes to me. I have a team, but I expect I would be the one.
Thank you. All right. The next topic we had was ethics and integrity. Looking down, I know the first question was just about conflict of interest, which I think we've already talked about, and I kind of feel, Bill, I don't want to...
You skipped one, you skipped one, you skipped Doc.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Doc, I'm so sorry.
I'm down at the end now. Easily forgettable.
I'm sorry, Doc.
With a name like Mark, you're not forgettable for me.
How would you work with other town departments and officials to address legal issues and provide legal advice?
So that's, ultimately, I probably, Paige determines how she wants us to interact with the departments. I work with all the departments in the cities and towns that I'm involved with now, I like to get to know all of your department heads, come to staff meetings if that's what you want, figure out an appropriate mechanism. Obviously, you know, there's the financial side of it, as well as the legal services side of it, and you want to make sure that you're managing your legal dollars, you also want to manage your personnel so that someone isn't running off getting an opinion when it's possible, A, that the town already has an opinion or has a position on that, and B, that someone's not running off looking for a rogue opinion. But in terms of relationship with the department heads, it's really important, they're the ones, they're in the trenches, they're the day-to-day, and you rely on them, Paige relies upon them, and they want to know that when they have a problem, that their town council will back them up. So it's important, again, it's the relationship thing, to make sure that they know who the town council is, they feel comfortable calling you, they have my cellphone, again, through Paige and the chair, to determine how you want to do that, but I have no problem giving out my cellphone and being that available, coming to meetings when needed, either department head meetings or setting up, now, you know, Zoom and Teams make it easier. I'm not a huge fan of remote meetings, I mean, I have no problem with them, and I do them regularly, but I like to be as personally involved as possible, because there's, nothing beats this. You know, Zoom is great, but for when you can't get people together, I've got a meeting I'm trying to set up, and I wanted to get everybody in one room, and counsel the other side, they're based in Arizona, I'm probably not going to get him in the office. But I said, "All your other people and myself, we're going to be in the office, we want to have people face-to-face." It's a totally different process. So in terms of the staff, certainly, you know, I attended a staff meeting yesterday, a new town manager showing up, and I took, he and I went out to lunch together, then we did a lunch with all the staff, so that all the staff would be there, I attend the staff meetings as necessary, so that, you know, I now have more experience than he does in the municipality, bringing him in. But it's a relationship thing, and they need to feel comfortable with their counsel. And they need to feel comfortable also with my team, because there are going to be times when your planner's going to want to speak specifically to Jonathan Murray, the land use attorney, and they're going to want to feel comfortable with him. But obviously, at the end of the day, it comes back to me. So if they say to me, you know, "How do you want to see this work?", I'm going to be the one that's going to give them the direction, and I'm going to be the one that's going to oversee it, and I'm going to be the one that's going to follow up with them to say, "All right, did you get what you wanted, and is there more that you need, and feel free to reach out to me?" So I'd be there, just as I am for you, but again, I have to respect Paige's authority as the town manager, and the chair's authority over your appointed boards and commissions. So it's really not, town council shouldn't be telling you how to use town council services. You tell us, we're the soldiers, you know, you're the commanders, and so you tell me how you want to make use of me, and then I do it, I implement it.
Thank you. I have a small follow-up to that. So obviously, looking at the list, and like you said, you're covering a third of the municipalities...
Not me personally.
Well, your firm.
Yeah.
So, obviously, Foxborough is unique, we're a small town with a football stadium, right?
Put that aside, yeah.
Exactly. So everyone thinks, so, you know, on day-to-day, sometimes the tiniest little things come forward, and, you know, I've only been chair for a short time, but I'm sure in the past, Doc has been chair before, sometimes there's something that you think is so simple that we could answer an email, or, you know, or a question of somebody's. So is it normal for us to be, we would still reach out to you, and then, you know, even if it's just something so tiny that, because you just think it's council and spending money, but sometimes we don't want to misspeak or give misinformation, because sometimes it makes a small, something small, turn into something big. So what would be your approach on, if it was just the tiniest thing?
And that's a great question, because I, literally, as I was coming in, I got a call from one of my purchasing agents saying, "I gave this advice, is it okay?" We, you know, she said, "I need to talk to you before 1:30," I said, "I've got a 1:00 meeting, give me a call right now." And we took care of it very quickly. There's so many of the questions, are these tiny questions, and put aside this colossus of, everything's, "Oh, the only reason you want to come to Foxborough is because of Gillette." No, you want to come to Foxborough because Foxborough, again, has a great economic base, a lot of projects going on, and it's a wonderful town, it just happens to have a stadium. But at the same time, you have all these issues. So, you know, I deal with, have you ever heard of the town of Heath?
No.
So Heath, you go all the way out, past Greenfield on Route 2, all the way out, and then you take a right turn, you go up the mountain, and you stop just short of Vermont, and there's Heath. And Heath has more sheep than people. It's beautiful, but in June, you still have snow on the mountain. And that was the first town that I took over when I came to Coleman and Paige 26 years ago. And they, I still have them, I've seen them through so many different Select Boards, and it's a very small, very rural community, where they ask, some of the questions they ask, like, how do we appoint volunteers to one board or another board, things that you probably, you know, you know how to appoint these things, but they don't. And they'll ask me, and they'll say, "This may seem like a silly question." And it's like, "No, no, this is your question. No question is silly or minor if it's on your mind." And a lot of times, it's like, how do we say this? How do we tell people this? And Heath is an example only because they really, they have a tiny, tiny budget, but they rely on me very heavily, and they won't have a town meeting without me, and even they just had to continue a town meeting, and I said, "Do you really need me for your continuation? It's just on a regional school district item." "No, no, we need you in case we have to continue it again. How do you adjourn a town meeting when you don't have a quorum?" And, you know, we went into this bizarre conversation, like, "Well, the two things you could do with a lack of a quorum, you could dissolve or continue, but how do you do that without a quorum? That's one of the two things you could do." "But we don't have a quorum." It's like, how many circles can you spin? But, so you get those little questions, but that's your day-to-day stuff. And one of the things I bring, again, 36 years, gray hair and all, is the ability to answer those kind of questions quickly, so that, some of them don't show up on the bill, because sometimes you're going to say, "Look, I just have a quick question." And I'm not going to be like, "All right, I'm going to start racking up the bill, I'm going to take out the timer." You're going to reach me when I'm driving in the car to the grocery store, and you say, "Something just came up, how do we say this? I'm going to help you, I'm a pretty good writer, and I help you figure out how you're going to make a quick statement, or how you're going to deal with an issue." I've dealt with so many of them, I'm a municipal generalist, I deal with so many municipal issues, that I could usually work you through something in a quick phone call, and obviously, if it's something complicated, I'm going to say, "Look, this is more than you thought it was, so let's get into this in more detail, we could do this now, or later when you have the facts." And sometimes I've got someone who calls me and says, "Look, I'm on my way with my mother to the hospital, but this issue just came up with my board, what do I do?" It's like, "All right, calm down, take care of your mother, but here, let's..." And that literally happened, "And then let's work through this." But you shouldn't be afraid of the stopwatch, and you shouldn't be afraid that, "Oh, my gosh, we can't reach out." I'm not like that, I don't believe in that, I don't think that works well for you. And maybe that's from having been an in-house counsel for 10 years. I think that you should be able to call up and say, "I've got this quick question," and you shouldn't have, the answer shouldn't be, "Well, I'm going to have to research that, I don't know the answer, but I'll check to see what statute applies." That's not going to help you when you're at a meeting and you say, "Let's recess the meeting and call counsel real quickly, because I don't happen to be there at the meeting." Or you say, "We need to get him here, let's call him up and see if we can get him on the phone, on Zoom, or maybe he could even come in person." Those kind of calls, they're really, really important. So those tiny questions, they have huge impacts. Completely apart from pilot agreements, and leases, and construction projects, your day-to-day is built up by a bunch of small questions.
Perfect. All right, so, sorry as I jumped ahead of Doc, but my first question, I know it's been answered, I don't want to speak for Bill, I kind of felt yours was too, but was something you wanted to...
Well, I want to make sure on your first question, though.
Oh, okay.
You don't represent Walpole, do you?
At myself?
No, the town, the firm.
Yes, yeah, we do.
Any other towns that are adjacent to us?
Well, we represent Medway nearby, and I think those are the two that I work very closely with Michael Boynton in Medway, and, you know, he used to be in Walpole, and I work very closely with Jim Johnson, so I do work in both towns.
So, but Walpole would be the only touching town?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Can you provide an example, I think you've done this too, provide an example of two communities, you know, that you were representing and had to navigate a situation involving potential conflicts of interest, and I think you...
I think I gave you a couple of examples, I can give you more, but, and we've done well with those issues.
Yep.
Before you ask a question, I've got to ask a question of you, because I keep hearing the reference to you as Doc, and that's got me curious.
I'm a chiropractor.
Excellent.
Been in town, practiced in town for the last 30...
You can help me with my sciatica?
Absolutely.
All right, we'll talk after.
We'll talk.
Sorry.
My license plate has Doc Elf on it.
Excellent, that's terrific.
And did your nameplate say Mac, though? Does it say Mac Elf?
That does, I don't know why they...
Because I heard the reference to Doc, and I was thinking, well, maybe we can get something going here, we could trade.
All right. One of the last questions, what is your opinion on retainer billing versus hourly billing, and when do you think one option is better than the other?
So we're open to both. I generally, I actually favor hourly in the sense that it allows you to control, as opposed to, I get nervous when the door is too wide open, and the reason being, when I talked about things like the rogue opinions and this open access, I think there should be control. And there are ways to do it, even with a retainer, and what's within the retainer, what's outside the retainer, yeah, these formulas get very complicated, and it's gotten more complicated over the years. We are willing to work on whatever you think is best. I like to figure out, and this is, again, a meeting with the chair, with the board, with Paige, to figure out how you want to make use of counsel, to figure out, you've got a decent-sized budget, you really do, to figure out what's the best way to protect that budget, to make sure that the proper people are getting access to counsel. So it's not so much like, how much does it cost, it's, obviously, cost is an issue, I'm not going to, you know that, but more how you manage that interaction so that you don't look at the bill and say, "Wow, I didn't think that that person had that level of access," and all of a sudden, you know, obviously, we bill in 1/10 increments, but that can, you know, an hour, two hours, and, you know, I'm pretty quick at responding to things, and giving that response in a, you know, my hourlies are pretty short because I can answer the questions pretty quickly, and so that's to your benefit. But you want to make sure that you're controlling it on your side, you're controlling that access. So we would have to figure out, is it a situation where we could put together, if it is a retainer, but even within that retainer, how that control is maintained, so you don't butt up against that retainer every month, and you're not, the last thing you really want to do at the end of the year is going back... really wanna do at the end of the year is going back to the finance committee for a reserve fund transfer or doing an end-of-year transfer, you know, none of us like to do that. But I have to, there are towns where I actually have to come before, it's more in the cities. I have a budget hearing in some of my cities where I actually have to come before the city council and present my budget. I don't make the budget. I always talk about how town council, city solicitors are reactive department, so you set the department, you set the budget for DPW, police, fire. How do you set the budget for town council? You look at your experience, and you figure out what is a reasonable budget, but you don't come to me and say, "You tell me what number you want." It doesn't work that way. Because then, and not that, I mean, yeah, that's great, I'm gonna give you a blind check, that'd be fantastic, but it's more, you need to figure out what suits your needs, and then we work within that, and we make sure and we tailor that. My wife laughs sometimes because she'll say, "You give a lot away." There are plenty, we do the trainings, we do a lot of free meetings and transition and things like that because we wanna bring you up to speed. In terms of developing hourly versus flat fee versus retainer, there are a number of options. Again, the reason I like hourly isn't because it fills my pockets, that's not, I've got enough, the firm has enough clients, as you know, that we're not looking to just pick up clients to make more money. We're looking for clients to help them, and we don't help you if you're over-expending your budget. The hourly rate allows you to track better what's going, I mean, you can see it anyway. You're gonna see, you're gonna get the same entries, and you'll tell us what format you want your bill in. We have a number of different formats where you see the initials of the attorney, the number of hours, a full description of the matter, and then the total spent. Or some towns, they don't want the initials, and they just want the total, they don't want the hours. It's, we have, I've gotta say, probably six different versions of bills that you can choose from, again, to tailor it to you. So this gets back to, you know, the question of how we interact with the town, how we interact with department heads. That's a meeting we have with you. So we have, I know, the proposal is, I think it's $2.45 an hour, then increased $10 every year, but that's just a basic proposal, and that allows you to really track and really know exactly how the money is spent. But if you're interested in retainer, and again, my personal preference, hourly, because you can squeeze that more, you can control that more, I think. A lot of times, you have a retainer, everybody bills right up to that retainer. And that's, now, I know I've got that much money every month, I'm gonna make that money. I'm not gonna leave that on the table. I'm not saying that's what I'm gonna try to do, but that's like, that, there's, it just seems less incentive, both on the town side, primarily on the town side, let's use up all that money. I like to give you the most control possible because, believe me, I'm not in this to make money. It's not, if I wanted to make money, would I be in corporate law? I'm not, I don't have any medical training, I don't get to do that kind of stuff, and I don't, I have no interest in corporate activities. I love doing this, and the reason is, you know, again, the white hat thing, but, so I'm not, I wanna put together a budget and a mechanism that allows you to control those funds as best you can, and hopefully, at the end of the year, have money left that goes into your free cash as opposed to into my pocket. I hope that answered.
Yep. Okay, so, Mark, that's the end of our questions, but obviously, at the end here, is there anything you would like to ask the board?
Well, I guess, one of the, one of the things is, I mean, how do you see the use of town council in terms of interaction with the board, interaction with the town manager? Do you see a situation where we would be primarily answerable through Paige, primarily answerable through the chair, responsive to each member of the board? How do you work it with Pat right now? How do you use him?
Well, and here's something, very similar question that we got from the other firm. I'll just kinda say the same thing I said, and then I'll pass it to the rest of the board, anything they wanna add. Couple of things I said, obviously, we have, we will have contracts coming up, and I also mentioned, of course, you know, Paige is the new town manager, and so, you know, if she's learning the process, she'll have questions for you. So I think those are some of the things, for me, knowing that our new council knows that is what's gonna be important to us. I think, and of course, the board can have a conversation, probably going through the town manager is always probably the best way to go. For me, then I guess it would come to me at this point, 'cause I'm the chair.
Right.
Now, with that being said, I think we've always, and, you know, even with Deb and Bill joining, I think this has always been a board that's been very willing to, like if Doc said he really had a question, he really wanted to speak with you, of course, I would feel like, "Okay, you know, that doesn't seem like how we've gone," but I think it's, we've always had good boards that work well together. So for me, I guess that's what I would, how I would see it, but let me pass it off to the other members, if they, you know, if there's something different they'd like to add or see.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think there's always, should be a protocol. Obviously, the town manager has to know what's going on. So, you know, I like your approach, not on, you know, boards going just directly to you on a regular basis, because I think that cuts the communication level above. I think when it comes, obviously, you work for the board of selectmen as well as for the town manager, but I think so when we do have questions that are specific, sometimes it's easier for us individually to ask that question, but again, our chair should know that we're asking that question, just so that we, you know, get it out to the right way. And quite honestly, obviously, we're looking for Katie to, you know, review, but, you know, bills when they come in and stuff, if they have no idea of what's being asked or questioned when a bill comes in, it's kinda like, "Who did that?"
Yeah, and that's something that I don't like to see, and it happens sometimes. This is when I talk about a rogue board or a rogue department head. It's rare, but occasionally, it happens. And so we look to, obviously, the town manager's a day-to-day gatekeeper, but we're appointed by the select board, and different boards do different things, and I work with good boards, and I work with some fractured boards. And you look like a very uniform board. I have a number of boards where it's two-to-two and one swing, and it's constantly seesawing back and forth depending on the election and the mood, and some of it gets, can get pretty ugly. And in those cases, it gets really difficult when you have access, and I have had boards where, by policy, every board member has access to council. And then you wind up with a situation where, Bill, you would ask me a question, and Doc, you would ask me the same question from a different perspective, and then, Stephanie, you'd have to, you'd have to figure out, how do we migrate through this? And I'm thinking, "Oh, my gosh, I just got asked with a different set of facts, but it's clearly the same issue, and now, I'm not number six. You've got a five-member board, and I'm not number six. I don't sit at the same table with you." And so I cringe when I've been in situations where a board member says, "Town council told me," and the other, another member says, "Wow, he told me something different." And then I have to come in and say, "Two different sets of facts," and I can't just hang up the phone. So it's important for you to have that process, but at the same time, if you wanna call me up and say, "Hey, you know, just wanted to chat," that's something, I love doing that. I love doing, or, "Can you come down and have, let's grab lunch or grab a coffee and just talk about whatever, you know, whatever is happening in town. It doesn't have to be a legal issue," and I'm happy to do that. But when it comes to legal issues, it's not, again, not just monitoring the spending, but monitoring the message, and making sure that you're actually getting not just the answer you want, but the answer you need, the answer you deserve, because sometimes you've got, if you, again, I always talk about garbage in, garbage out. Depending on the facts you give me, you're gonna get a particular answer, and if you haven't said, "All right, Debbie, this is your issue now, you contact town council and you ferret this issue out," and so I respond to you, but then, again, if Doc, after looking at my sciatica, says, "And by the way, can we get into this issue?", and suddenly we're veering into a question I already answered, but there are new facts coming in, I've gotta figure out, who's giving me the right facts? And it doesn't do you any good to have a town council whipsawing back and forth.
You know, obviously, even for people, you know, watching at home, this is good to learn, and that's why best practice is to go through Paige.
Yes, best practice.
And then a lot of it comes from Katie, because they're able to get the information to us that we can't be sharing with each other so we don't break the open...
Well, yeah, and I'll always remind you of that.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, and it's interesting, because we talk about the gatekeeper approach. There's a gatekeeper on our end, and there's a gatekeeper on your end. You as the chair, you're the gatekeeper for your board, Paige, and obviously with Katie, are the gatekeepers on a day-to-day basis, and that has to be respected. I'm the gatekeeper on my end. None of my folks are gonna do work unless I tell them to do that work so that I can control that, because if you or Paige call me up and say, "Look at this bill. I wasn't expecting this person to be working on this, and this thing got out of hand," then I'm sitting thinking, "All right, I gotta cut, you know, 10 hours, 15 hours off the bill because it wasn't authorized," and I'll do that. If someone comes to me, and I do this all, I won't say I do this all the time, 'cause it makes it sound like we're doing that all the time, but if somebody comes to me and says, "This went too far, or it wasn't what we wanted," I discuss that, and I will take things off a bill if it went down a path, even if it was at the direction of a department head. If the town manager calls me and says, "That, we weren't expecting that, that really wasn't what we were authorizing," I'm never gonna say to you, "Well, you gotta pay for it.